Councilwoman Ross?
Yes, ma'am.
How's the family?
They are amazing.
Well, I wore your cowboy hat.
Did you wear it? Good, Kelly's hat, good.
Tell you why. I went to the...
Rodeo last night?
Well, it was in the afternoon. I went to just see everything.
Are you gonna be in the parade Saturday?
I don't know. My husband's back in the hospital, so I don't know.
If you do know anything you need from me, then at your service.
You're wonderful.
Twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
Ross, you call me midnight, I'm there for you. You know that.
I know, we... No, that's true.
Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada, Ms. Quigley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Your agenda is in order and ready for your approval. I'd like to point out that we do have fifteen fuel revenue index projects on there, and just want to let you know, too, that we've had, we've currently got twenty-five projects under construction right now. We've already reporting about six hundred jobs that have been created as a result, and want to report that thirty-four of those jobs have gone to either small businesses or minority businesses, so.
All right.
Just heads up. But your agenda's in order.
That was way too quick. Could you just repeat some of those steps?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, before she does, I think we need a drum roll first.
(laughing).
Don't you think? So say that slower.
Sure. Your agenda is in order and ready for your approval.
We don't care about that.
(laughing). I wanted to point out that there are fifteen agenda items related to fuel revenue indexing. Yeah.
(applause).
Not on the agenda, but just kind of as an FYI, we do have twenty-five projects out right now. It has been reported to us that we've created six hundred jobs already, and of those jobs, thirty-four of them are either small or minority business owners. Yeah. (applause). We were complaining about traffic this morning on I-15, and Greg says, "That's because you're creating so many jobs."
(laughing).
Oh, okay. So, well, it's ready for...
Not that slow.
Okay. It's ready for your approval. Okay, you proved the, you proved it, okay. Item number two is to receive the general manager's report. First, we'd like to take a moment to recognize our superstar of the quarter, Nick Rusavage. Is Nick here?
Yes.
Come on down, Nick. Nick is being recognized because of a proposal he came up with, which, to change our lighting fixtures in our transit shelters, it's gonna save us a lot of money. They'll be better lit, and will increase passenger savings, and of course, cost savings to the RTC. Over the past fifteen years, Nick has consistently performed as a team player, and has always looked for ways for the RTC to approve as an organization. Nick, oh, sorry.
Yay, Nick.
Yay, Nick. Yay, Nick.
She said better lighting.
Right in the center stage. The chairman there. Are you tweeting?
She is. (laughing).
Yay, Nick.
Yay, Nick.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the management team and my coworkers, 'cause I couldn't have done it without them.
Aw, thank you. Next is part of the general manager's report. Jerry Keating is gonna give you an update on our safety and security efforts. You asked us at a previous meeting to dig deep into the data, find out what's going on, and report back to you what we could do. And with that, I will turn it over to our Assistant General Manager, Jerry Keating.
Thank you, Tina. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I want to tell you that over the last several months, we have worked in a very cooperative environment with our contractors at both MV and Keolis, as well as our Allied Barton security contractors. In addition to that, we've also had some outreach focus groups with our drivers, and I want to thank them all personally for their involvement in helping us make this a very safe system for all the riders and drivers and tourists that come to Las Vegas. Before I begin, I want to tell you that we obtained information and research from numerous transit agencies across the country, the FTA, the National Transit Database, as well as the APTA, and used some of their information to compile our report. But again, I want to stress the partnership that the RTC Safety and Security Division has with both of our contractors and the drivers that are out on the road, and appreciate, and thank them for their valuable participation in our system. With that, I'm going to begin and show you that one of the questions that came up several months ago was, does Allied Barton have a way of tracking trespass logs? And as you can see on the slide in front of you, they have an electronic way of tracking their trespass situations, and basically, we share this information with Metro when we need them to either remove a passenger from either our transit facility or one of our coaches. Right now, I want to give you the current safety situation that occurs at the RTC. We have thirty-nine bus routes that operate twenty-four hours a day, which equates to three hundred and forty-five buses. We have twelve officers on every shift, and we have one roving patrol team that operates throughout the entire valley. What this equates to is we have one officer for every ten buses that are on our route on a daily basis. Over the last six months, we've done an analysis, and we've carried thirty million passengers, and during that time, we've had fifty assaults. Now, when I use the word assaults, I'd like to explain to the board that the definition of assaults is very different from every transit company that we talk to. The National Transit Database has a different definition of assault than the FTA has, or than APTA has. So we're working very diligently with our contractors right now in an effort to come up with a agreed-to definition of assaults that works for everyone involved in our system. Some of the research and recommendations that we had is, again, I mentioned, we talked to the FTA and other associations. We have surveyed other agencies, whether they use transit police or not. And again, the driver focus groups were very enlightening for both myself and Assistant General Manager Maynard, when we went out and sat and talked with the drivers about the security of our system. According to the FTA, since 2018, there has been a hundred and two percent increase in assaults across the country. Keeping in mind that there have been, there's a hundred and two percent increase in assaults, there has been about a five-point-eight percent decrease in ridership across the country. So you can see the dilemma that transit agencies across the country are facing. Most of the assaults basically occur from passenger misconduct and fare evasion, although in the valley here, we do see some from, driven from alcohol use as well. When we spoke with the operators, they identified some areas of concern that they would like to see us address, and they would like to see us put more response teams on the road as opposed to the one roving patrol that we have out there. They would like to see more security presence on the bus. We also discussed the idea of safety enclosures with the drivers, because across the country, you're starting to see more and more safety enclosures installed on transit systems in an effort to prevent operator assaults. They asked us to put more signage on the buses that was clear and easy to understand, of which MJ and her team and myself are working on to enhance that on each of our routes. And then they asked for saturated security on all routes. Saturated security is something that's important to us, as well as it's important to Allied Barton. We don't declare or tell anybody where those routes are, so, you know, we can address the behaviors that are on there, but we do move our Allied Barton officers around strategically in an effort to minimize either assaults and/or any additional crimes that occur on those routes. The staff recommendations are as follows. We did a survey in regards to driver safety enclosures, and there are four different pictures here you can look at, but of the respondents that we had from both of the contractors, eighty-eight percent of the respondents believe that the full-door enclosures are gonna be more beneficial to them, and seventy-six percent of the drivers at MV feel the same way. On the bottom two slides, you see two different, one's a hinge door and one's a sliding door, however, they are both full-door enclosures. It just depends if the door swings out or slides back. New York MTA uses a full-door enclosure, as well as Milwaukee is now using a three-quarter door enclosure. So most of the transit agencies across the country are looking at some type of barrier to protect the driver, as well as to protect the operation of the vehicle. I am going to come back in next month's meeting with an agenda item, asking the board to increase security, increase the security budget somewhere in the neighborhood of three to four million dollars, to continue enhancing the system-wide security that we have on our system, and to make it, and to continue enhancing the safety prospects that we've already put onboard. We are gonna continue our relationships with our, with MV, Keolis, and Allied Barton. We are gonna continue to reach out to our drivers and the ATU for their involvement in putting safety barriers on the buses to protect the drivers. We are going to continue to attend the driver's safety meetings with both MV and Keolis, and we are gonna continue to have our focus groups with the drivers, the contractors, Allied Barton Security, and ATU for their input, to make sure that this is a collaborative effort from all of the parties involved. The one thing, Commissioner G., although she's not here, she did raise a question, and that was, how come it takes so long to get an Allied Barton officer on a coach when there's an issue? In the past, we had Allied Barton dispatch separate from Keolis and MV Bus Operations Centers, and one of the things that we're doing through our cooperative effort with our contractors and Allied Barton, and through Cindy Wallace and her transit team, is we are moving Allied Barton dispatch centers into the bus operations centers, so as events occur, we can have an immediate response to protect our operators and our passengers. So that's something that's gonna happen, my guess is, in the next three weeks. We are planning three weeks to a month to have that done. So with that, I will be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Comments or questions from the board? Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jerry, how many bus drivers participated in these discussions?
I'm gonna say that we probably had, in the three different sessions, somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty.
Fifty drivers from both firms?
Yes.
Participated in this. Are any of those drivers here today, with the chairman's permission?
I'm a passenger.
That's good. We like that. We like passengers. Well, I just want to publicly say thank you to those drivers that participated, because this is certainly very progressive on the RTC's, and the RTC's nature to move forward with their, the drivers' concerns, and certainly the public's concerns. We've all been briefed on this, of course, but I think it's significant to note, Ms. Quigley, through your executive team's efforts and your leadership, that we're heading in the right direction, not only for our passengers, but for our drivers as well, because they are our team, as well as Allied Barton. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And I think as, as we are committed to growing the transit operation at RTC, I think creating a safe environment for all of our riders is critical, and I think that that will further increase ridership because of the comfort in knowing that you're safe in that environment. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, and thank you for your direction, and thank you for asking us to, to do more of a study and get more in-depth in this, because it really is important to us as the RTC to make sure that our system is safe. We are the number-one tourist destination, and want to continue to be the number-one tourist destination. So not only is this important to our daily riders and our operators, but tourist, tourists as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman?
I just wanted to add that, really, the genesis of all of this came from some comments that were made at our meetings, and it just shows you that if you do make these comments, they are taken seriously, and we do try to make a change, and it's taken a while, but we are all working together, and management is hearing what's happening on the gut level, and we are making the changes that are more efficient, and I think that's what government should do, and I thank you very much for following through on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes your general manager's report. Item number three is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report, and Rudy was not able to make it today. He sends his regrets, but he will be here next month.
Did he officially notify us?
Yes, he officially notified us.
Rudy, are you out there? Anybody from NDOT?
Brave man.
Bueller?
They will be here.
Mayor.
Next month, and I'm sure he is available.
Rudy, though the state's not here, sorry, Tina, though the state's not here, could I ask just for an update? What has happened on the DBE issue? I know I went and spoke at the preserve to a bunch of contractors, you and I were participants there. Can you just give me an update on what's going on with the state and with you?
I know they are continuing to work with FHWA to create, and as well as, from the Transportation Board, Tom Skankie, to create a working group to internally, within the state, come up with processes and procedures that help streamline and clarify the process. But with that, Angela, if I could ask you, do you have anything to add? Angela's been keenly involved, closely involved in the conversation.
The last I heard is NDOT's looking to host a roundtable, but I don't know when they're gonna host a roundtable with the community and the contractors and the prime contractors to get additional feedback as they work along with this other working group. So they're all over it. They've had several different conversations with FHWA. I think they're in a fact-finding situation, and then she's also, Tracy Larkin, who's taking the lead on this, is also looking to bring people in, other experts, and host something as well. So I think they're right now in the fact-finding portion.
So Angela, when there is resolution to this, will it come back to this board so that we'll understand what the agreement or what the, how we solve the issue?
Yes, so I do know, speaking with Tracy, that that is, she plans on doing an educational, informational effort amongst all the electeds and going out and saying, "This is what we think we need to do, and how we need to move forward," and this is the input that we've received.
Okay, thank you very much.
But it is definitely a process. It's a great conversation, it's great, because we've got private sector, we've got public sector, we've got FHWA, NDOT, all at the table, talking about the confusion that exists and trying to figure it out, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks.
Tina, could we ask NDOT to, in their presentation next month, an update on Project Neon?
Moving on, item number four is your first citizens' participation period.
This is the first period set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak on a specific posted agenda item, now is your opportunity.
Well, can I say a few things about what I just heard about the security of the buses?
That would be...
That's not why I'm here.
That would be the second public comment, yeah.
Oh, that's the second? Okay, thank you.
And we enjoy when you stay for the entire meeting, so please.
Well, that's why I say it last. To make your day.
Seeing and hearing no one will close this portion of public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The next part of your agenda is your consent agenda. Agenda, it's made up of items five through forty-three, and may be taken in one motion.
Motion. Motion on the floor, approve the consent. Comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Items number forty-four through forty-six are related to the approval of the budget, and Assistant General Manager MJ Maynard will introduce those.
Thanks, Tina. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, item forty-four is to receive a presentation on the tentative budget for fiscal year 2015. The RTC's tentative budget for the fiscal year 2015 was filed on April 11th, 2014, with the Nevada Department of Taxation and the Clark County Clerk's Office. The budget has been on record at the RTC and the Clark County Clerk's Office for a review by the public since April 11th, 2014. The document includes the budget for all agency funds. This presentation will be followed by a public hearing on the budget, and then the commission will be asked to adopt the budget as the final budget for fiscal year 2015. Mark Travers Dollar, Director of Finance, is here to present.
All right. Thank you, MJ. We'll start out this budget presentation with our revenues. Our main source of revenue is sales tax, and you can see that we're budgeting one-hundred and seventy-two million for fiscal 15. That's a three percent increase over what we're projecting for fiscal 14. In fiscal 14, we have enjoyed a six-point-three percent increase in sales tax through February of this year, and so we're projecting about five percent increase for this year, to be somewhat conservative. We move to fuel tax. You can see that we are budgeting sixty-five million dollars again. You can see that sixty-five million dollar figure back to 2010. So that really has fluctuated a little bit in the sixty-five million dollar range, but not enough to move off of that, the rounding to a million, it's about sixty-five million, so we're very flat there. Our new source of revenue for streets and highways projects is the fuel tax indexing. You can see we're projecting about twelve million dollars for fiscal 14, and fifty million dollars for fiscal 15. And that big jump is due to the rate increasing for fiscal 15, and also fiscal 14 only included a half a year, only six months of revenue. Our fair revenue, we're estimating or budgeting that to be seventy-one million dollars in fiscal 15. One million dollar increase due to the additional ridership that we anticipate for Route 120, and also installing new ticket vending machines. This next pie chart is all of our funding sources, or all of our revenue, and you can see we've worked in the fuel tax indexing, which will make up seven-point-three percent of the agency's total funding sources. And then the next chart shows our uses, or our expenses. You can see that capital outlay is a very large portion of that, and that's due to the fuel tax indexing and other streets and highways projects, along with the transit equipment that we're going to buy. And going into the capital budget, we're budgeting fifty-two-point-one million dollars for fiscal 15, and with that, we're going to invest that into a transit mobility center, and also more bus shelters and safety enhancements. We're going to buy eighty paratransit vehicles, and twenty-five fixed route vehicles, and all those are compressed natural gas. We're also going to be purchasing new ticket vending machines that will be placed mostly on the resort corridor. And then we move into our streets and highways capital projects, and we have budgeted eighty-nine million dollars for motor vehicle fuel tax, sixty-seven million dollars for sales tax, and then our fuel tax indexing, we have budgeted three-hundred-and-seventy million dollars there. And that concludes my prepared comments on the budget. I'm open for any questions?
Comments or questions for Mark? Mayor Lee?
You know, I went through some situations in North Las Vegas that I inherited, and I guess my question is, do you have some sort of rainy day fund, or what do you have as a contingency?
We do.
Could you tell me about that?
Yes. The, the, I'm trying to, the acronyms are on the top of my mind right now. GFPA, the Governmental Financial Officers Association, they have recommendations for how much we should keep in a rainy day fund, or a reserve. So does APTA, the Association for Public Transportation Agencies. They also have recommendations, and we are real close in our transit business of having those reserves. We're very close to that. They recommend about a six-month reserve. The board actually requires that we have a two-month reserve, so we're at about six months.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other comments or questions?
Do we need an action to accept the approval? Actually, your next, the next agenda item is just to conduct a public hearing, and staff is available to answer questions.
Are we on item forty-five now?
Yeah, you want to read it? Go ahead. Yep, item forty-five is to conduct, conduct a public hearing on the tentative budget for fiscal year 2013.
This item is a public hearing. We'll open up. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing and hearing no one will close the public hearing.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, item forty-six is to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2015, and direct the Department of Finance to transmit the final budget as adopted to the Nevada Department of Taxation, and staff recommends approval.
Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just a comment, and I think it's incumbent, again, I reemphasize the importance is these dollars that are so sacred to our economy and sacred to this organization's functioning, that we are putting money back out there on the street. I mean, Mark, everything you talked about, you know, the budgeting, the funding, the fuel revenue, and I think it's incumbent also that we, as board members of this Transportation Commission, formulate in our minds today the importance of that revenue, that fuel revenue indexing, because we're gonna be talking about this for years to come, and it is a significant investment in infrastructure, whether it's transportation, or in our previous meeting, flood control, or anything of that matter. So I just want to reemphasize that again, certainly to the public and to the audience today, and I'm preaching to the choir when I'm talking to the staff and the board members, but I just think that's important, that we all start doing that today and be prepared for tomorrow.
Thank you, Councilman. So entertain a motion to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2015, and direct the Department of Finance to transmit said final budget as adopted. Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Very good. Item number forty-seven is to conduct your last citizens' participation period.
This is our second time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak, there's cards coming up. Would you like to be first or last? Since, since you are the only requested speaker today, would you like to come up, or would you like that portable mic?
I will wait till, till the last. And then I'll stick to the mic. You're trying to say that.
You are the first, you're the last. You're...
I'm mad today. Oh, well, good morning. I'm Arlene Shively. I'm sorry I came in a few minutes late, but I was enjoying sitting in the, out there in the weather. It's so nice, and I, and I had an early ride to get here, and I hated to come in hearing about the security on the buses and things. I ride them, and I basically feel safe, but I don't like to talk about anybody, but I'm not in a very good mood today. The humidity might be high, and my bones might be aching a little bit, but anyway, that wasn't my reason for being here, but as I tried to tell the drivers at one of the meetings, security is a two-way street. The passengers get on, and there are the drivers on there, and if you, if we're not pleasant to each other, then catastrophes can happen. It just so happened that I was on one about six weeks ago, and I felt a little fearful because the passenger was angry, and the driver was angry, neither one of them was gonna stop, and the bus stopped, and I didn't know whether the passenger... And the bus stopped, and I didn't know whether the passenger had a gun or not, because the altercation occurred so quickly. But anyway, it was started, and you can have all of the things you want to put on the bus. If there are two people and they are not happy with each other, an incident can happen. And I don't know whether it's the times, but I'm on there, and I hear the passengers say, "This bus fare is the most that I pay anyplace else in the country that I ride." I don't know, because I don't ride anywhere in the country. I just happen to ride here a little bit. But rudeness should not be tolerated from anyone. And I came today particularly because I have a very personal issue with Mr. Keating on the paratransit. I'm trying to get into court to get it settled, but as anyone can read in the papers, the state of Nevada is not the happiest place for, should I say, a Negro to be, or a Black to be, or whatever you want to call us. Everyone you talk to has their personal commentary to make on the racial issue. And when two people or three people have a problem that cannot be settled, except through the court, it just gets to be very highly ignited. And I want to tell Mr. Keating, don't make any more snide remarks to me, because I don't think I will be able to take another one and retain my lady, part of my personality.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board? Seeing and hearing no one, this meeting is adjourned.